Okay, before the city manager's update, we do have one more item. It's February and it is Black History Month and Councilwoman Isomore would like to go through the events that the city has planned for us this month, which began with the Harlem Swinging Dance, which was a lot of fun. We did a little swing dancing. So, Councilwoman Moore.
Right. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Councilman Aramo. And I have to say that Councilman Aramo, along with Jennifer, had a great time on Friday evening, and they learned how to do the Charleston, but they actually, he had a little, something else called the Kid in Play going on during his dance routine. But at any rate, we had a wonderful evening on February 2nd. And that brings us to the fact that we are proud as a city to celebrate Black History Month. Many of you are aware of the fact that Carter G. Woodson, back in 1926, established what we call Negro History Month, which then in 1976 became Black History Month, and we've been celebrating that time ever since. And for many of you who were driving this evening, you'll recognize that the actual traffic or street light, the patent, was conducted by Garrett Morgan, who was an African-American man who developed the actual patent for the street light. So this is what we're celebrating this month. We're celebrating contributions that Black Americans have made to American history. And so I'd like to go over with you some really exciting events that are upcoming. One, on February 13th at 7:00 PM, right here at the Long Beach Library, we have Still We Rise, a celebration of Black literature and music. Throughout the country during the month of February, we have what we call an African-American Read-In. And this is sponsored with the goal of increasing literacy throughout the country. And so this year, Long Beach will once again partner with many other libraries across the nation to promote literacy. And we're asking people to come out and give a reading. It can be a short poem. It can be, again, some kind of fiction work. But the purpose is to read and to promote literacy. And so once again, we hope that you'll join us, 7:00 PM at the Long Beach Library. Second, on February 15th at 7:30 at the Long Beach Library, we have what we call Conversation in Black. This is celebrating Black beauty. And we're going to have a special panel, which will really focus in on cultural images with respect to Black women and beauty. And so we hope that you'll come for this really interesting conversation. On February 16th at 7 o'clock at the MLK Center, we'll have a children's book reading. And the reading is based on the book called Sunny's Gift with Amma Yawson. Amma Yawson is an African-American woman who will be actually sharing and doing an actual performance with her book reading, and it's called Sunny's Gift. So if you have children, we encourage you to come out. Or if you're just really into African storytelling, we encourage you to come out at 7 o'clock at the MLK Center. And then finally, on February 23rd at 7:30 PM at the Temple Emmanuel, we're going to have a Gospel Shabbat. This is the second year in a row where we've celebrated, where we bring the African-American community together with Temple Emmanuel, under the direction of Rabbi Jack Zanahav. And this year, we're focusing on the Nehemiah Project, which is a gospel a cappella group. They'll be joining. We also have a wonderful time, and we'll be actually singing with Lisa Arcanter. So we bring the two cultures together, and we encourage you to come out and celebrate with us as we once again promote Black and Jewish relations within the city of Long Beach. So we hope that you'll at least attend one, or maybe more, but share with a friend that we are, as a council, proud to celebrate Black History Month with all of these wonderful events that are going to take place. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting of the council of the city of Long Beach, held Tuesday, February 6th, 2018, at 7:00 PM. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Bendo.
President.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice President Diamond.
Here.
President Aramo.
Here.
Let the record indicate the presence of Acting City Manager Michael Tagney and Corporation Council Robert Agostisi. We'll now have a salute to the flag.
Councilwoman Moore, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the city manager's update, please.
Well, I will skip my comments about Black History Month because I could not do it as eloquently as Mr. Councilwoman Moore. The snowflake race and the polar bear swim, we'd like to thank everyone who participated in the snowflake race on Saturday, and of course, thousands of folks who joined us on Sunday for polar bear plunge. As always, there was a tremendous turnout for this wonderful event, with the proceeds benefiting Make-A-Wish. Protecting Lloyd Aquifer. Last year, I was proud to join with County Executive Laura Curran in the fight to protect the Lloyd Aquifer, our most precious resource. The city has been extremely concerned about protecting and conserving the Lloyd Aquifer, especially since 2014, when we first heard New York City was proposing to reopen the wells in Queens, which would tap into it. Long Island has only one source of fresh drinking water, and that means more than 2.8 million people rely on the wells to pump water from the Lloyd Aquifer. So we are urging the EP and the DEC to eliminate reactivation of the Lloyd Aquifer from their plan, as we await real, in-ground data from the U.S. Geological Society Groundwater Sustainability Study until making any decisions that could dramatically affect the future of Long Island water. Our city planner Lucia Copacaputio, not easy for an Irish guy, has just received the Arthur Kunst Memorial Scholarship from the Law &amp; Tact of the American Planning Association. This is the third Long Beach planner to receive such a prestigious honor, and we're very proud of Lucia. As we remind, the state and county tax bills that were mailed to Long Island stated that payments were due by February 12th. However, since city hall is closed on the 12th, we will extend the deadline to Tuesday, February 13th. We are still doing the food drive with the Clerks Association. There are boxes in the city clerk's office, so get to this worthwhile project. And all of the food that we collect will go to Island Harvest. And then the last thing we have, in between all the events for Black History Month, we're having the Long Beach Musical Festival on February 9th and 10th at the Long Beach Library. It's featuring some amazing local talent. It's really a fun time. So Long Beach is the home of recreation, and there's plenty to do this month. So stay out of the cold and join all these different events. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our first item this evening is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for radio system maintenance with the lowest responsible bidder.
Yes, this item, the main transmitter for the police and fire, the antenna had gone down, and we had some radio problems. We're using our backup system. If that goes down, we don't have anything else to use. So this is very important that we get this out, get this work done quickly, so we can have a reserve as well as an active repeater.
Any questions from the council? Councilman Bendo?
Just one quick question. There's a clause in here for two-year renewal. Is the renewal at the same rate that's in the resolution?
I believe so.
Anybody else? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, next item.
Item two is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the purchase of original equipment manufacturer automotive parts for the city's fleet of vehicles on an as-needed basis.
Okay. As any car owner knows, occasionally the cars break down and they need to be repaired or they need general maintenance things. Fortunately for us, we have a very active and aggressive asset forfeiture policy, which means that when we arrest people for various crimes, where we can develop a nexus from the car to the crime, we can seize that vehicle. So there's a Lexus in our fleet that we got from a woman that blew a 4.3 for a second DWI felony. We seized her car. So we needed to find a way to repair these cars at an economical rate, not just going out for a specific part. We were able to get tremendous, tremendous discounts from many of the, from George Automotive, doing business as Long Beach Auto Parts, that some of our parts are reduced up to 60%. So this was a very effective way to deal with the parts needed when we're only buying a small amount, by doing a complete bid for all the parts, so that at least they have, they're invested in the system. But we can get a real discount when we only need one part for a Volvo, or a Chrysler, Ford, Chevrolet, Dodge, Jeep, Lexus, Nissan, Honda, Mazda, Hummer. So, and the Smart Car also, BMW. So it really was a comprehensive bid that will help us in the long run.
And we've done business with them in the past?
Yes.
And by doing it as a sole, one sole bid, it allows for us to get the parts quicker and not have to bid for each individual part?
Well, they're a pretty large outfit, and they do stock a great deal of parts. They also are able to get parts from dealerships that they can, even with getting from a dealership, they can get this, pass on their savings to us.
Anyone else from the council have any questions? Any questions from the public? Sir, come on up. State your name and address for the record.
Yeah, hi. Good evening. Jay Gusler. Just curious, I mean, I've been to a few council meetings. I'm sure I've also missed a few. But I've never seen this particular type of item on the agenda before. Presumably, we have in the past incurred a need for auto parts and found a way to fulfill that need without benefit of council resolution. I'm just curious to know why this has suddenly risen to the status of requiring a council resolution.
Well, we went out to bid, so we have to approve the acceptance of the bid. And we've done it before with the same company?
No. We would, the city garage would just go out to anyone in the area, any of the auto parts stores as an emergency, and buy whatever was needed that they didn't have in stock. Then at the beginning of the year, they would have to guess what would break and what wouldn't. So we might have extra brake shoes and not have enough steering pumps or whatever, power steering units. So this was an opportunity to get the manufacturer to guarantee a percentage reduction on every part. So it's not just, you know, there's a thing for starters, there's a thing for power steering pumps. It's whatever GM makes, we get at a very reduced rate. And it's much more, after doing a financial analysis, it's much more cost-effective.
So basically, it's an assurance from Long Beach Auto Parts that a price on a given item is going to be X point percentage below the going rate, for lack of a better term?
Yes.
And do we know who the principals of this corporation are?
I have no idea.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, next item.
Item three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional program management services for the city's transportation department and to amend the budget.
Just before I get to that, in the last resolution, at the bottom contract, it says, at the bottom of the resolution, it says, "Enter into contract with Christopher George Automotive." So I would assume Mr. George is the principal. Okay, this is a little confusing. I had to ask a couple of questions myself today about it. But if you take the last two lines, the 29,880 and the 40,120, that equals the 65,394. No, no, that equals the 70,000. I'm sorry. That equals the 70,000. We needed 65,374 for the transportation study, and we had about 35,000 at line. So the extra 29,880 will bring us up to the 65,394. We also needed money in the transportation machinery and equipment, so that was 40,000. The two of them add up to the $70,000 transfer. On the 65,394, it's 100% reimbursable by the FTA, and the machinery and equipment is fully funded at 90%.
Okay. So my understanding is they're requiring us and paying for this?
Study.
Study, right?
Yes.
The federal government, because we have our own bus system, is requiring it and paying for it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Councilwoman Diamond, you have a question?
Okay. This was a little confusing to me as well. So I'm just going to ask if Corp. Counsel, if you can give us a little bit of an understanding exactly what these consultants do and why we need this item.
This consultant, which by the way is refundable from the federal government, is necessitated, sorry, is necessitated by the fact that the FTA process, that compliance process, has picked up steam considerably in the last few years. And these individuals, or this company, I should say, is going to be assisting us in the transportation procurement process, and specifically helping us to comply with this, what's become really a Byzantine set of laws, rules, and regulations that are promulgated by Congress and by the FTA.
It's fully reimbursed.
Correct.
So to put it in layman's terms, they're going to help us navigate the red tape?
That's exactly right.
Thank you.
And they're going to pay for it.
And they're going to pay for it.
Correct.
All right. Anything else from the council?
Thank you.
Any questions from the public? Ma'am, please come up. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, Allison Blanchett. Okay, so I have a few things on this. I saw, I saw this on BidNet. Jack Schneierman had posted this up last September. Urban Engineers was the only person to respond. Where did the $65,000 number come from? Is that what they had offered to do this for? That's one question. Second, why now? Why wouldn't you wait for the permanent, like, the incoming city manager, whoever he or she is? Why wouldn't you let them structure this department? Because, you know, and this brings me to my next question. Isn't this the job of the head of the DOT to maintain these grants? So just to be clear here, I'm not sure if any of you saw the RFP that was out on BidNet for this, for these particular services, but it's pretty much just maintaining what we already have. Some of the grants that are, you could see them on the 2016 to 2020 STIP list. They're there. Who had originally applied for those, and why can't they keep maintaining them? There's no more red tape now than there was four years ago with, or with the previous one. Like, I'm extremely familiar with these grants, and this isn't a study. You said it was a study. It's not a study. This is just for purchasing our bus shelters, the new fare boxes, all sorts of things that we were told that we were getting, actually, back in 2013. Jack said that he had ordered them, but that clearly wasn't true, because they're on the next STIP list. So I want to know, who's in charge of the DOT? I'm getting a flashback of when I used to ask that. Who's in charge of the DOT?
You mean, who internally deals with them?
Yes.
Director of Transportation.
Who's the Director of Transportation?
Brendan Costello.
Brendan Costello. Why is Brendan Costello, who's done this for many years, in addition to Michael Robinson, who's in the back, and maybe he can answer this, why are they no longer doing this? They are both paid very well. Why are we hiring an outside company to do this?
Well, because this is a procurement function, Ms. Blanchett. This is-
Yeah. So these are things that we've already done in the past, that these employees have already done. You know, getting new fare boxes, getting the bus shelters, things like that. You don't need an outside company to get. It's not that much of rocket science. What you need is actual, non-political appointees in this department, people who actually know what they're doing. So by not hiring the correct people, we now have to go out and pay. Where did this 65,000, oh my God, I would do this job for half of that. Like, who came up with that amount? This is really, really silly. Where did that number come from? Where did that number come from?
This money is reimbursed.
Okay, that's another thing. So-
Let me just finish. You asked a question, so let me, let me answer your question. The money is reimbursed to us. I don't know that this money would be reimbursed for a salary. It's my understanding that this specific money is reimbursed for these specific types of consultant, because the FTA regulations are fairly complicated. Whether there's other people who might have this expertise, that is not what we've done here.
Okay, so this specific grant is actually not a 100 grant. This is an 80/20. So I'm really curious how you're, where that other 20 is coming from. Is there anyone in this room who understands, when I say STIP, what that means? Does anyone, is there anyone in this room who understands how these grants work? Is there anyone in this room who, could you tell me who's filling out the National Transit Database every month? Is that still Michael Robinson doing that? Anthony, are you going to take lead and answer a question? Are you going to just sit there?
Your time is up, ma'am.
Are you going to answer any of my questions?
No, I'm not answering those questions.
You're going to just keep protecting the political appointees?
Your time is up, ma'am.
You're doing a terrible job.
Anybody else? Seeing none, next item.
Item four is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application to waive off-street parking requirements for premise 1048 West Beach Street for a acai bowl, coffee, and smoothie shop. This item is for publication only. A hearing will be held February 20th at 7:00 PM. Item five is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application to waive off-street parking requirements for premise 62 West Park Avenue for a psychic reading shop. This item is for publication only. A hearing will be held February 20th at 7:00 PM. Want to the voting portion?
Maybe the psychic can tell us how we can vote.
Item one is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for radio system maintenance with the lowest responsible bidder. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
President Aramo.
Yes.
Item two is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the purchase of original equipment manufacturer automotive parts for the city's fleet of vehicles on an as-needed basis. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
President Aramo.
Yes.
Item three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional program management services for the city's transportation department and to amend the budget. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
If Ms. Blanchett's correct, I'm not exactly sure what I'm voting on here, so I'm going to abstain.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
President Aramo.
Yes.
Item four is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application to waive off-street parking requirements for premise 1048 West Beach Street for an acai bowl, coffee, and smoothie shop. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
President Aramo.
Yes.
And item five is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application to waive off-street parking requirements for premise 62 West Park Avenue for a psychic reading shop. Excuse me. Who introduced the move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
President Aramo.
Yes.
Make the motion to close the meeting.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
President Aramo.
Yes. All right. This is, as we all know, our good and welfare portion of the meeting. You're entitled to three minutes of uninterrupted time. Please be respectful, and as former President Torres would remind us, maintain decorum.
Liz Trastan, Long Beach. I still am not at a home. It's February 6th, and I'd like to know if the city has decided what beaches would be used for access beaches for 2018. In my recent FOIA request for information gathered from the past two pilots, years that yielded no goals, no best practices, or plans. I haven't been here for a while. Secondly, I'd like to request the city's policy on social media. Is there a standard for residents or groups that have information placed on the city Facebook page? And why aren't city council meetings placed up on the city Facebook page when they would occur? In January of 2017, an RFP was put out. I'm going to backtrack a second because I was just taking notes. As you may or not be aware, the city's webpage isn't up to current standards for the W3C Web Accessibility Initiative. So in January 2017, there was an RFP that went out. I'm not sure if a company was hired, but today, and I don't know why it's always me, but it is, Facebook was maybe perhaps hacked, but a local web developer was on the site and then removed. My question is, were they hired without cc knowledge, or were they just poking around?
No.
Okay, then. So, and is that RFP still happening? Because that was in January of 2017. It's now 2018.
I'm sorry, Ms. Trastan. It was an RFP, I wasn't, I couldn't follow. It was an RFP for a web developer?
Correct. In 2017, the city put out a big, that was very specific on making our social media-
I know we did the Long Beach Listens as a separate thing.
Yeah, no.
It wasn't for that. And something happened today? Something happened today on Facebook?
Yes.
Okay, I-
I would, I'll share it in an email. I don't want to make, it's a local company, so perhaps they won the bid. Their bidding process went out, and they're just-
Okay.
Doing a little work. I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, no one, no one knows. As far as, continue if you-
No, that's it. So what's the story with the beach for 2018?
So, we haven't, we haven't really started our beach.
Since we're piloting-
No, we're, we will be starting the beach conversations in a couple of weeks. Commissioner Morando is aware of the issues. We are looking at the beaches. We also have the cognition of the Army Corps of Engineers.
I'm on the stakeholder meeting. I'm quite well aware of that.
So as soon as we have that information nailed down, we will let you know.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Trastan. Ms. Kathy Williams.
Good evening.
State your name for the record.
I'm here to speak about the gentrification project. When our, our, city manager Tagney, I almost said Commissioner. When, when will we come out of the shroud and print out clearly what this program is really about? From my perspective, it's about getting rid of all the poor and the so-called middle class. Now, I could be wrong, but that's what I see, and I think everybody in the city should know, and all over, what's really going on over. Because this is all over the United States. I've never seen a where it was all over a movement to get rid of all of the poor people. Now, we know that the history of Long Beach, poor working people who came out to work for people out here who wanted to live elite, they had to be out of the city at a certain time. That worked back then, but it's not going to work that easy this time around. I don't see how it's going to work. What is the plan for poor and so-called middle-class people? What is the plan? Because this is a very ugly situation. And I don't blame people who want to live elite. I don't blame them. I would like to live like that, too. But in this world, it's not going to be that easy.
Okay, very basically, we cannot prevent gentrification with our existing zoning codes. So if we don't adopt a master plan, there is no ability to put in protection for affordable housing. There's no ability to even define affordable housing. So this was a comprehensive plan to do just that, to prevent gentrification. So this was a comprehensive plan to do just that, to prevent gentrification, to treat the entire community as a community and to keep the core here, the culture of Long Beach. We have a blue-collar community, we have a minority community, we have a wealthy community. We all survive very well together. Our children go to school together. So that is, the whole purpose of this master plan is to develop a rational approach to the development of the city that protects all of those groups.
Thank you, but I'm still waiting to see the protection. God bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Deena Fiori? Is there two there? State your name for the record.
Deena Fiori, Long Beach. I'm here to discuss the comprehensive plan or to just make some comments. First and foremost, on behalf of a number of residents in this city and on behalf of Long Beach neighbors against overdevelopment, we feel that any and all votes in regards to this comprehensive plan should be tabled until a permanent city manager is put in place. Nothing personal to anybody who's acting, but a permanent city manager, the one who's going to have to continue to carry on the vision and to execute the vision or the zoning codes going forward, should be very much a part of the plan, the process and the future of our city. Not somebody, again, who's temporarily in their place and not, not to take over somebody else's vision to go forward. Somebody who has a better, or will have a better clear understanding of where our city is headed for the future. So I think that's what the residents of the city, we talk about the comprehensive plan being about the residents first, that's what the residents want first. So before a decision is made based on a Newsday article that came out, that I hope in two months before you decide to do this, that that is, that person is in place and has had a significant amount of time to review that plan and agree and make sure the residents of North Park and the people of the Bay and the Canals and the ocean, the oceanfront and the West End, from, from, again, from one end of Long Beach to the other, is considered before this happens. I would also like to say that while the city has held 17-plus meetings in an outreach situation, and I think 18th just happened, the eight, the last meeting, if you noticed, for those of you, and there was a number of you sitting here at this dais, this dais will know, that there were four new people at that meeting. If there were 40 people in that room, four people that meeting reached outside of the rest of the people at that meeting, were people who have been to that meeting on a number of occasions. Those people at that meeting are representatives of civic associations, of organizations, of groups of people across the city. And while you think that you're reaching the rest of the residents of the city, your numbers that you quoted at that meeting, where we're a city of 33,000-plus people, we've reached through those meetings, to use your numbers, somewhere between 1,500 and 2,000 people. That's a pretty very, that's a very low number of outreach on a plan of this size. So again, I would say, consider those numbers before you think about going to a vote. Because I still believe, and we still believe, that there's a lot of people that have not, do not have a clue as to what you're talking about. The other part of that we asked in these sessions was we specifically asked on a number of occasions that the sessions would be a question and answer session, not a roundtable, because what the questions that were being asked at other tables are the questions that maybe people didn't hear. You tried to accomplish that at the last meeting a little bit at the end, but I still believe that it's a divide and conquer. This table is concerned with this, this table was concerned with that, and at the end you tried to regroup. I still don't believe, I think the best meeting you held from a comprehensive, and that was, again, the feedback I've gotten from a lot of people, was the meeting you held in North Park. Where you sat there and we sat here. I guess I'm going to run out of time. The last, the last thing I would say is, before we do the zoning undertaking, the last question I have is, where, where is the, you told everybody here that Toro, that Toro was doing a study, and I found out that Toro is not doing the study. So I think you should inform the residents of Long Beach why nobody ever told anybody that that, that study on the zoning codes is not going to happen.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Fiori.
Thank you, Ms. Fiori.
Please just state your name for the record.
Good evening, Jackie Odom. Commissioner, you look kind of funny there in the acting city manager chair. My subject tonight is on the comprehensive plan. First of all, I'm from the concerned citizens of the North Park area. I would like to say to Ms. Patty Byrne, you've been very consistent in working with your plan with your past and present staff. In your affordability of housing and gentrification, we commend you for all the hard work you put in for, for a draft plan was extensively rewritten to include key points on the economical issues needed for a community benefit agreement empowering the North Park area. But we come here today as the citizens of the North Park, we want to know what is the rush to pass the comprehensive plan. There is still a gray shatter hanging over this plan. We hope that every council member is knowledgeable of what's in the plan and how it would affect the complete residents across the city. Let's get it right before we pass this plan. Some residents think this is a nice vision and not a solid plan. It needs more work. Under the zoning update, community tools, work to prevent gentrification. This should be worked out first before we go to the zoning plan. Affordable housing and gentrification, as you know, it's a lot of zombie houses and it's a lot of houses for foreclosure and mostly in the North Park area. So we say we didn't want to have gentrification in those areas, but you leave it open for private developers to come in to raise up the prices and raise up our tax. And my last statement is, I hope you hear our plan, I hope you hear us, I plead and allow us more time on this comprehensive plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Odom.
Thank you.
Please just state your name.
Eileen Hessian. I didn't come to talk about the comprehensive plan, but I think I would like to state that I do agree wholeheartedly with the people tonight who spoke about it, that you should think of residents first. So many of the residents know nothing about this, and you usually preach into the choir here. You know, it's all the same faces that show up at these meetings, and it's a very, very small number of residents that show up. So I hope you think of the residents first. What I did come up for was a clarification of the rules of good and welfare versus the rules of speaking at a resolution. So I know that in the past you have said that during good and welfare, you can ask questions or make statements, but you won't necessarily get an answer. Is that still true?
Yeah, technically it's three minutes of uninterrupted time.
Okay, and sometimes you answer people and sometimes you choose not to. But when you have a resolution that's being discussed and you ask, are there questions from the council and are there questions from the audience, you usually answer them, don't you?
If, if I can, yes, or if someone else can.
Yeah. So, I just wanted to state that I think it was very dismissive and very disrespectful to Allison Blanchett, who seemed to me to have an awful lot of knowledge to share, and I think after hearing what she had to say, you probably should have tabled that, or at least the people she mentioned who are involved should have come up and spoken to that. If people that are already on the payroll have already done this before, it doesn't make sense to hire outside people to do it, in my opinion. And I think it was just disrespectful when she said, will you answer my questions? And you said, no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hessian. I had thought the questions were already answered. The FTA is requiring us and funding the consultant or, and paying for it. So I thought it's asked and answered. And I'm not going to respond to grandstanding.
Okay, the, the, I'm not grandstanding, this is...
No, no, I'm not, I'm not saying you are.
And Ms. Diamond had said that it's going to be paid for, and that just reminds me of when the trees were dying and Jack would say, we're replacing them for no charge. They're still dead trees, you know? If it's being paid for by somebody else, somebody's still paying the money.
Correct.
And it's wasteful, so.
But they're requiring it.
Got it. Thank you.
Please just state your name for the record.
So, yeah, the comprehensive plan, I don't think that you guys should be even entertaining this yet. We don't have a city manager. Sustainable Long Island doesn't even exist, that Toro law thing doesn't exist, we don't have a planning team. I'd like to thank you, Eileen, for saying that. I am used to being dismissed by Anthony Aramo, and pretty much used to it at this point. That and being stabbed in the back. But anyways, why don't we go back and why don't you answer those questions? Because that's not, I, I wanted to know, because the grants, these specific ones for the FTA, this wasn't something out of the ordinary, this wasn't a, a study. This is that you just have to, like, when you're getting federal funding, like, clearly you, you, you have no idea what you're doing up there, I get that. But like, I, I can't even like, look at you right now. Could somebody explain to me how you can vote on things that you have no, and I'd like to thank you, John Bendow, for being the only one with common sense up here, how you can vote on things you know nothing about? I'm over here telling you that I happen to know about these grants and that these are generally 80/20, unless they're actually bike-specific and then they can go up to 90/10. So where is that other 20 coming from? And where did that, you know, this, what was it, 64,000? Where did that number come from? You only had one answer to that bid that was up on the RFP that Jack put up on bid.net. You know, like, where did that number come from? Could you have put that bid back up if you were really hell-bent on having an outside company come in and do this because you have no confidence in your head of DOT, who you don't let write the grants? You know, we, we've spent enough money on the DOT, thanks to Jack Schneierman and those lawsuits, the multiple lawsuits. You must know what I'm talking about, Agostisi. So how about some answers? Do you have any idea, anything about this, this funding? Or were you just kind of like nodding your head and going along?
Please finish your time.
You definitely don't know much about those grants because you've consistently violated them, kind of like with, you know, the private use of charters. But hey, that's okay, it's Michael Robinson doing it, and he gets protected, doesn't he? So I'd like to thank you for voting no on that and admitting you didn't know what this was about, because clearly the other people on this council, and I hate to say this to you, Ms. Moore, but you as well, are guilty of this. If you don't know what these are for, how many other things are you voting for that you know nothing about? All of you.
Mr. Jay Gussler?
Please just state your name for the record. Sure, Jay Gussler. Maybe a little disjointed, but preliminarily, a rhetorical question, which is, why do you guys refuse to tap into the expertise of locals who have vast knowledge of certain things, like Ms. Blanchett, at the expense of all of us? You can talk about it's paid for by some grant, whatever the case may be, the bottom line is even that grant money, that's coming out of some taxpayers' dollars pockets somewhere.
Correct.
Second thing is, tapping into Mr. Tagney's comments about the aquifer issue, obviously we're all well attuned to that. It's a significant issue and will be for generations to come, but while we're, while we're grandstanding and appearing at news conferences talking about the condition of our aquifers, we are ignoring our rotting water delivery infrastructure that is, I've been hearing from administration after administration, council after council, about how our standpipes are on the verge of collapse. Our water towers are well past their service lives. Forget about getting your picture taken at news conferences, let's get our act together and worry about cleaning up our infrastructure. I've also seen speaker after speaker parade up to this council and demonstrate to you guys the problems that we have with our water quality, only to be blown off and dismissed as, if nothing, don't worry about it. So let's perhaps look a little bit more locally before we worry about the condition of the aquifers. And the third thing is, I understand you guys have whittled down the city manager candidate list to a shortlist. I hope I'm wrong, but I've heard that Mr. Agostisi, of all people, is on that shortlist. I would first remind you guys that there is still a requirement in place that city managers reside in the city of Long Beach, and as I'm sure you're aware, Mr. Agostisi does not. Second thing is, the record of performance that Mr. Agostisi has in office certainly doesn't merit promotion to city manager. In fact, in the real world, he'd have probably gotten fired a long time ago. But this is Long Beach, and I recognize that he has damaging material on some of you people, and thus he is insulated from being held accountable for his incompetence. But nevertheless, I would urge you to strongly consider not hiring Mr. Agostisi, even on an acting basis. He's the guy whose basic mistake put us on the hook for a $50 million judgment, among his many other legal failures. Not the right guy for the job. Don't even know how you guys can be considering him.
Ms. Morando, you weren't here the last meeting. Would you please come up and just talk real briefly about the water quality and the rust issue we had, or continue to have? The standpipe, I believe was replaced. Just real brief, thank you.
Yeah, some, you know, when you draw from the Lloyd Aquifer, there's a lot of natural iron that exists in the water. Many people may not know this, but we have one central treatment plant to remove that iron. So when the water goes out of our plant, it meets, more than meets all the standards and quality requirements of the EPA, the Nassau County Health Department. Unfortunately, we do have an older distribution system, and as we go through and do road replacements and complete roadworks, we replace old online cast water mains with ductile iron cement-lined mains to prevent the buildup of tuberculosis. Tuberculosis is a natural process of iron buildup on the mains. When you get a disturbance in the main, such as a fire somewhere or somebody opens a hydrant for a street sweeper, you get a reversal of flow, this disturbs the main and these sediments come out. A lot of people have been kind of led by filter companies that, you know, filters will solve all your problems. There's really nothing in our water you need to filter out. A lot of times when a person comes up with a filter, paper filter, naturally it's going to be full of iron because it's run for about three to four months. And this is what happens, that it takes the iron out of the water. A lot of times people get discovered water problems in their hot water tanks because their hot water tank temperature settings are way too high. You know, it shouldn't be over 120 degrees, and this disrupts the balance in the water and you will get some sediments out of the water. There are natural solids that exist in all water supplies, suspended solids, and without those suspended solids, you would be drinking distilled water and that would be taking minerals out of, out of your, out of your, your body. So, our water is perfectly safe, yes, we do have a lot of water mains over time that are going to need to be replaced. We are addressing them. We are addressing the water tank issue. As a matter of fact, we just had a report completed with a replacement cost for a new water tank and to also increase the amount of storage we have in the event of an emergency so that we can run much longer before we have to worry about kicking in emergency generators. I would not be so quick to dismiss the whole issue about the Lloyd Aquifer. The Lloyd Aquifer is the sole supply of water here on the barrier island, and anything that can disrupt that, we should be very concerned about. And I'm glad that our, our leaders are out there speaking up about it, because this will protect not only Long Beach, but Atlantic Beach, Lido Beach. We all rely on this barrier island, on the Lloyd Aquifer. So I, I think it's very important that we pay attention to that problem. So I think in the next couple of years, we'll have some projects coming forward where a lot of this infrastructure will be, be replaced. It's impossible to replace 60 miles of water main all at once, but we are doing it on a regular schedule, and we're doing it with newer mains that aren't going to, cast iron mains have a tendency to break during cold weather snaps, because you get ground movement, and it's cast iron, so we'll get a sheer break in it. New ductile water iron mains are very flexible and are not susceptible to those kind of breaks. Quite surprisingly, with the cold winter that we just had and the deep frost, I expected many, many water main breaks, and we really only had a few. We did have some frozen water services that was due a lot, in a lot of part times because of cuts and caps that were done for raising homes, and the fact when the water service went back in, the lines were not as protected for this extreme cold weather we're having. So, I certainly, I, as a resident, if somebody's a resident along... So I certainly, I, as a resident, if somebody's a resident in Long Beach, they should have absolutely no fears of drinking our water. Our water meets every standard that there is. So I'm very confident, and I've been in the water supply business for almost 40 years, so I'm very confident in our water.
I hope that answered some questions. Thank you very much. Mr. Dan Fraser? Please state your name.
Dan Fraser. I just want to mention something that's been weighing on me all day long. It concerns the city clerk. Happy birthday, Dave. All right. Good evening.
All right, let's hear it for Mr. Fraser. Happy 29th birthday. Should we sing? Thank you, Dan. Ms. Mindy Dolberg? Please just state your name.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello, everybody behind me. Hello, everybody online. Good to see you up here, John. So I have two things I have to just say that was not my topic, about the, I'm off now.
Snow removal?
The, what?
No.
I don't even know. Let me just breathe deep. Okay. I'm just going to stay on topic. So I, last week, two weeks ago, we were talking about, Tagney, Mr. Tagney, you just said about the beach, what Ms. Trusson was just talking about? So you said in a couple of weeks, we're going to talk about the beach, right?
No, we're going to have internal meetings preparing for the beach season.
Okay. So I wanted to discuss, you guys did the pilot, the pilot program for the beaches, for them, for the restrooms, two, for two years? I was just curious what the pilot program worked out, what you guys learned from the pilot program, and how long the pilot program is going to go for? Because you guys did it for 2015, or 16 and 17, and now we're going on 18, and when is it ending? And what you guys learned from the pilot program? And where are the, what's the plan for the ADA restrooms? And where they're going to be? And all of that good stuff? Where the mats are going to go?
Specifically, are you talking about the West End bathroom?
Well, the West End bathroom, what I'm, what I'm understanding was just at Tennessee, and I'm curious as to how you guys decide where the bathroom goes? Is it from the, where the ADA restrooms are at the restaurants? Is it where, where, where people are in their home? I mean, how do you figure that out?
When, when you're finished, I'll have Mr. Miranda come back up and discuss the new West End bathroom plan.
Okay. Okay. And how about the mats?
The mats, I think, are still under discuss.
Is there a committee or something that all of this is decided on? How do you guys figure this out? I don't, I just, it's very confusing to me.
The departments that have an integral, integral part of the process are invited in to discuss both the products and the installation. So DPW for the products themselves would be involved. John's our licensed engineer, so he understands the whole ADA compliances. The beach maintenance is the department that puts them out and maintains them, so they would be involved. Sanitation also does operate on our beach, so they would have to be involved. So they, it's the people that have impact on the issue that are in these meetings.
Okay. Can you, can we find out about what the pilot program proved since it was ongoing for two years?
Thank you for raising that question because you may recall, back in summer of 2016, I spoke to the importance of assessment.
Yes.
And that we would have data.
Yes.
So I have not seen any data with respect to this pilot program, and obviously I would like to see it because last summer, as a result of some of the unfortunate incidents with respect to the Mobi mats, I had called for an advisory committee, which would be comprised of community members such as yourselves so that we can have some, some, some real feedback from the residents. Because there are so many different ways, and we talk about ADA and we talk about rights for people who may have challenges, there are different needs. And so I still feel strongly about having that committee and having input from people like yourselves. We need to use that and partner with all of the, the actual departments that are here so that we can maximize access for all residents.
For everybody, for absolutely everybody.
For all residents.
I think, I think the mats last year were great to have them on the beach. I think they need to go to, as close to the water as possible so everybody has the ability to put some part of their body close to that water. It's not fair that it goes in the middle, not even in the middle, actually, barely down that sand. I hope that none of you have to experience anything. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Miranda, can you please discuss some of the challenges with the Mobi mats, but, and then also the touch on the West End bathroom a little bit? Which is a requirement. I know there was some talk about why even have a West End bathroom, but we are required to have one in that portion of the beach.
Just, in, in general, with the Army Corps project going on and working with the DEC, just a couple of things. Anything that we place on the beach, including Mobi mats, requires a permit from the New York State DEC. And New York State DEC actually frowns, their coastal erosion people frowns, frown on Mobi mats on the beach because of it interferes with, you know, sandblowing and things of that nature. Big problem for us with the Mobi mats is one thing in Long Beach, we can really pride ourselves on having some of the most beautiful beaches in the world. People that have been all overcome and they, they just can't believe the condition of our sand. Our sand is like talcum powder, and the reason is because of the amount of maintenance that we do on the beach. And that's one of the big issues that we have with the Mobi mats. We can't maintain the beaches as easily with the Mobi mats down, and we can't bring the Mobi mats all the way out to the, to the tide because it definitely, as it creates a big problem with tideline debris. As a matter of fact, we ended up destroying one of the Mobi mats last year trying to clean up the tideline debris. It just interferes with the equipment that we use. So we have to come up with a way to give people access at certain beaches. We're going to have to get permits for those Mobi mats. And then again, remember, we, we do have lifeguards and we do have special wheelchairs to take people from the end of the Mobi mat down into the water, which, and they're available within five minutes. It's a quick phone call to the lifeguards, and they get them down. As to the bathrooms, this is a more wider issue that I'll discuss. We actually have been granted another $1.7 million from FEMA to finish building the permanent bathrooms and the new lifeguard station. So there will be new handicap accessible bathrooms going in at New York Avenue, off of the boardwalk, at, at Neptune, and also on the West End. Nassau County Health Department requires us to have at least one bathroom on the West End. Just a little history on the bathrooms on the West End is, the original bathroom was a lifeguard shack at the end of Virginia Avenue. When Chauncey's was around, the bar, I believe it was at Georgia, Chauncey's didn't want another bathroom built because they felt it would interfere with their business, and they had offered to the city that they would allow people to use the bar if they needed to go to the bathroom in there, so the city put off. And this is my understanding of the history. And they put off building that bathroom. But when Chauncey's closed, they then made Virginia Avenue into a full-scale bathroom. Sandy came along, wiped out the bathroom, and we've been putting temporary bathrooms down on the beach there, also in New York and Neptune. The State DC has told us they will not permit those bathrooms in perpetuity. In other words, we have to grandfather, you know, put an end to putting those bathrooms in and actually build permanent bathrooms. The other thing is because of the dune, these bathrooms are going to have to be built above the base flood elevation. So that means building the bathrooms over the, over the dune. So the bathrooms at, and what we looked at in placing the bathrooms, and we're trying to get, we're actually have the piling diagrams put into the contract for the Army Corps for the sand replenishment, because if we don't get the piles put in for the bathrooms, it's going to take another two or three years to get permits approved and everything after the Army Corps is done. So we thought it was, made sense to have our engineers develop the pile plans for all three bathrooms. This way, they could be put in the contract to the Army Corps, and they'll go in with the sand replenishment, which will speed up getting these permanent bathrooms. On the West End, having to have a bathroom on that's accessible to the beach, as you can know, 90% of the homes look over the dune and have beautiful views of the beach. So it becomes problematic on locating the bathroom. So Deputy Commissioner and myself spent a couple of days looking at every end of the beach, and we came up with a plan to locate the permanent bathroom on the West End, off the crosswalk at Minnesota, which is handicap accessible. We've designed a handicap accessible bathroom for there, and we've blended it in with the walk, walkway. We have some modest renderings that I was able to share with the West End Neighbors Association. And we're going to try and move along with that. We'll need a SEER, what's called a SEER permit to place that bathroom. We're hoping to have that bathroom placed by this, this summer, but we need to begin the permit process, which we're in the process of putting the documents together. And then the two bathrooms at Neptune and New York will be placed when the dune is done, you know, and the sand replenishment. So the dune already exists on, on the West End, obviously. So I, I think you'll see some resolution to this. As to the Mobi mats and the final location, we're looking at a couple of ideas. We've got, we all are going to have to get permits for them also, but we have to be able to do it in a way that we can continue to maintain the beauty of our beaches and, and still, you know, afford access to those people in need. So we're, we're working on a lot of things. Hopefully, in the next couple of weeks or so, or next month, we'll have a final plan as to where we'll make the beach access. And, and part of that is also making sure there's enough handicap parking available so that people can access right there where the Mobi mats are going to be. And, you know, so there's a lot of things that go into it. And if anybody has any other questions.
Just by moving the bathroom from Virginia to Minnesota, one of the issues with, for the residents of Virginia was the traffic that goes down their block because families tend to use that bathroom. Will there be something included in the bathroom plan to mitigate that for the residents of Minnesota?
Yes. One of, one of the issues of Virginia also was, that was one of our busiest ticket booths in terms of selling tickets. So as we did with Virginia last year with the temporary bathrooms, there will be no ticket sales at Minnesota. So that will cut down on the number of people that come there because any of the visitors that come down to the West End beach look for one of those four streets that they can buy tickets on. And we're trying to distribute that better. Last, in speaking to Phil Rigona, who runs all the Ticket Takers, the year before, Virginia Avenue did 3,000 tickets, and the other three locations did 1,000 tickets. So you can see the difference. It's almost a three to one compared. So we'll, we'll try to keep that spread out again. Additionally, the bathroom on the West End, as opposed to the bathrooms that are off the boardwalk, will be more like the bathroom on Pacific and Long Beach, where the, the bathroom won't open until Memorial Day, will close by Labor Day. In addition, the ones on the boardwalk stay open all night for the runners. The bathroom on Minnesota will be shut at 6:00 PM when the lifeguards go off duty.
All right, thank you very much, Commissioner. Appreciate it. Mr. Lou Dubau. State your name.
Good evening, Lou Dubau. Happy birthday, Dave. Couple of quick things. The new dock off of Indiana is a great idea. I know years ago, we used to have a dock by the hospital. Are there any plans or could you look into plans of possibly having a, a dock or something there so if there's an emergency and they need to get to someplace quick, as opposed to running up to Oceanside or, you know, whatever, just, I don't know if there are plans for that?
Commissioner Cummins, there's a, going to be a dock. You could just shake your head. At the hospital, is it?
There is one.
There is one there.
There is one there. Oh, good. Okay. That's not a problem. This is for the police commissioner. The lights going west are not in sync. There used to be every two lights. I'm sure you're aware of that. Is that something the city does or that's, that's county?
Well, we brought in a consultant where we timed those lights a couple of years ago when we went to the 30 mile, oh, 25 mile an hour speed limit. So I will contact the, the vendor and have him contact Nassau County Traffic Signal Timing and see about getting those lights adjusted.
Okay, good. Another question for you. Does 911, if you dial 911, does that go to Nassau County or goes to, to Long Beach?
It goes to Long Beach unless you're using a cell phone.
Oh, okay, okay, because I talked about that with my wife.
Yeah, the cell phones all go to the Nassau County, and then you just ask for Long Beach, they'll transfer you. But all the homes are hard, are hardwired into the Long Beach 911 system.
Oh, okay, good. The other thing, when everybody speaks, if they speak closer to the mic, it's easier than if you're back like this. Just, just a general statement. And the last thing about the comprehensive plan, I didn't, I wasn't at the last meeting on that, but I think it is a good idea of waiting till we have a permanent, no offense to you, Mike, but, you know, permanent, someone who's going to see, you've got to get somebody in there, and you're going to go back to being chief of police. So it's, or commissioner, whatever your, your title is. So I'm just, I think that's a good idea to wait on that, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dubau. Okay, that's it for this evening. Thank you very much for coming, and please get home safe. 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 And please get home safe.